Carter, please take your seat. Okay, before we go to the next item, which is winter maintenance, I'll take release of holds. Any release of holds? Please put your name on the list. Anybody? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna release MM 3250 on favor, carried. I release that one.
Thank you. I'd like to release PH 23.1, Expanding Housing Options in Neighborhood Garden Suite Monitoring Program.
Okay, PH 23.1, Counsel Perks is releasing recorded vote. Yeah. Okay, so Counsel Perks is moving the supplementary on PH 23.1. Okay, and recorded vote. No, just on the item. On the amendment on favor. Okay, display it. Okay, there's the amendment. On favor, carried. Item is amended, recorded vote. Recorded vote. Recorded vote on the amendment. Recorded vote on the amendment. We're voting on the amendment first.
Counselor Chairnos Lin, please, if we could get your vote. Counselor Chang and Counselor Pritzker, please. Counselor Crissanti, please. Motion one carries, the vote is 18 to 2.
Item is amended, recorded vote.
The item is amended, carries, the vote is 17 to 3.
Mayor Malik. Oh, yeah, more releases? Okay. Counselor Perks.
The place here. Okay. CC 3211, Expanding Housing Options in Neighborhoods, Major Street Studies, Ontario Land Tribunal Hearing, Request for Directions.
Okay, so Counselor Perks is releasing CC 3211. On, recorded vote? Recorded vote.
Counselor Crissanti, please. And, sorry, Counselor Moyes, your vote, please? In favor, thank you. The item carries, the vote is 18 to 2.
Deputy Mayor Malik.
Myself, no.
You have quite a few.
No, I just have two.
Okay, well, we might lose quorum. Counselor Bravo. Counselor Bravo.
Yeah, thank you, Speaker. I have a motion to defer, and that has been prepared for me, and the item is CC 32.6 and CC 32.7. If clerks would be able to display the motion.
CC 32.6, 1117 Queen Street, correct?
Yeah, and 32.7 is also 1117 Queen.
Okay, so on CC 32.6, Counselor Bravo has a motion to defer to the October council meeting. On favor, carried. On CC 32.7?
Also a motion to defer.
Put the motion on the screen.
There's progress in conversation. There are questions and motions from colleagues.
There it is. 32.7 is being deferred, on favor, carried. Did you want to release any items on economic development?
I have motions and questions of staff, so I have to consider.
So you're not ready to release them?
Correct.
Counselor Fletcher.
Yes, CC 32.27, limiting the number of automated speed enforcement infractions an individual vehicle owner can receive from a single camera location prior to receiving their first infraction in the mail, and I do have, the mayor's holding this, but she's just asked me to release that and send, wait, wait a sec, wait a second, can you wait one second? Can you wait one second? Could you just wait one second? Thank you. To send that to the infrastructure and environment, rather than... That's my motion. Well, then, the mayor still has.
Counselor Sacks.
Oh, wait, I have...
Oh, you have more? Counselor Fletcher?
I do. I do. I don't know, check the motion. You're on that committee. Well, you're on the committee, that's correct. So there it is, there, October 29th, Infrastructure and Environment Committee.
No!
It's going to that, you can change it, amend it, going there.
Okay, CC 32...
Oh, in favor.
3227, to defer, to refer to October meeting, on favor, carried. Okay, Counselor Fletcher, you said you had more?
Yes, I do. I was holding EX 25.6, and I'll release that. I just have a motion there, which I have given to staff, recognizing that the carbon taxes is gone, we need money from the other...
Hold on, Counselor Fletcher, hold on. This, this is on EX 25.6. Do you have a motion on that one?
I did turn it in. Okay, if I don't have it in there, somebody has an interest, one second, just let's make sure they have my motion first, counselor. Thank you, I'm just waiting.
No, Counsel Fletcher, they don't have your motion.
Don't have my motion. Okay, thank you.
Do you have any more?
You don't need to worry. I don't write yet, but I'll be coming along with others. Thank you.
Counselor Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Given the hour, I'm going to release AU 9.12, the Parks Audit. I wanted to get some information from Park staff on the record, but I'll do it separately.
AU 9.12, Counselor Sacks is releasing, on favor, carried. Any, any more, Counselor Sacks?
No, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Bravo.
Thanks, Speaker, I'm back. If there are no questions on the rat response plan, then I can quick release it.
Okay, which one is it? Is it the rats?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, don't release the rats.
EC 22.5 Rat Response Plan, Counselor Bravo is releasing, on favor. Yeah, I have a lot of rats in my ward, I'll tell you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you to staff for great work. High validation for this plan.
On, carried, carried. Do you have any more?
Lots of validation for this plan.
Counselor Bravo, any more?
Yes, I do. So I understood that someone wanted to speak to the Business License and Permit Applications Action Plan, but if I can spend 30 seconds on it, I'd love to quick release it.
Okay, EC 22.7, Counselor Bravo is releasing, on favor, carried.
And then indulge me for 30 seconds to say thank you so much. The review of the, of business licensing in this city is a, is a huge boon to the local economy, cutting red tape for small businesses, and I want to thank the staff at Municipal Licensing and Standards for undertaking this massive amount of work. We're not regulating stuff we don't need to regulate anymore, we're really modernizing, and I just want to pay tribute to the work that was done and to our, our leader, Carlton Grant, I didn't want to interrupt in the morning to give thanks, but it's been wonderful to work with you, you're an incredible partner in all this work, and you're going to be deeply, deeply missed. Thank you.
Coyote, no?
I believe Counselor Sacks would like to move a motion on coyotes, and there'll be... Yes, but I, we'll, we'll have to ask questions about that, so if you want to go to that now.
Okay, okay. Deputy Mayor Malik, you have your name up.
Yeah, I'm gonna try. IE 23.6, the cycling network plan, I just want to confirm that clerks has my motion. Yep, and there are three other motions here, they have been advanced circulated, can we vote on them, or do they need to be moved?
Okay, hold on, hold on, let me ask, do we have the motions for IE 23.6?
They're, they're specific to the, the ward counselors' areas, as far as I can see.
I don't know if Counselor Pasternak is coming back. So just, just, so what is it that you're moving? Do they have your motion? There's three motion?
Yeah, they're from different, and my, my motion, there's four.
Okay, so we could, somebody could move it on behalf of Counselor Pasternak. Counselor Carroll. Okay, so can we put the motions on the screen, then? So which motions do you have?
Oh, no, it's not you.
And Pasternak hasn't circulated his? So Counselor Pasternak hasn't circulated his, so do we just want to put these motions that we have forward?
No, we will hold on to it, then.
No, but I don't know if he's coming back.
But he has his, he did say he was going to advance circulate them.
Yeah, put up the motions that you have. Okay, so we have one from Counselor Bravo. Okay. On favor, carried. Next one. Motion by Counselor Fletcher, we'll put it on the screen. On favor, carried. And Counselor who? Motion by Counselor Candibel, on favor, carried. Okay, do we not have Deputy Mayor Malik's motion? No? Okay, well, pardon? It's not ready, so let's just hold that down till we get your motion, okay? Do you, do you have any more? What, do you want to release your members' motion that you introduced for Liberty Village? Do you want to move that one? MM 3251? Okay, on favor, carried. Then MM 3252 is Counselor Bravo. Counselor Bravo, do you want to move that motion about the, the funding for shelter and support? Okay. On MM 3252, Counselor Bravo is moving, so we move those two items. Now let's, on favor, carried. Counselor Myers.
I just want to move quickly SC 24.1. I just want to quickly thank the staff, Nicole Welch and Laura Danard, for all their hard work on this, and for Montgomery Sisum Architects for their, for their design, that's really going to add something to the community, and, yeah, I would just like a recorded vote on it. Thank you.
You want a recorded vote?
Thank you.
Okay, so Counselor Myers is releasing SC 24.1, and he wants a recorded vote.
Are we having another holiday vote?
No.
This is just a, this is just a whimsical Myers vote. Right? There's a lot of whimsy in this.
It's a long-term care home, long-term care home. That's getting built in my...
Counselor Pritzker, please.
Counselor Pritzker, please. Counselor Chrysante, please. Counselor Pritzker, please. The item carries unanimously, 22 in favor.
Yes, Madam Speaker, this one is genuinely quick, I hope. Just want to release MM. Sorry. MM 32.49. Assistance to the St. Vincent de Paul Society. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Speaker. I am prepared and ready to release EC 22.1. Counselor Chang has a motion that I think we can all get behind. Yes. Can we put it on screen, please?
Here's the motion by Counselor Chang on CC 22.1, Toronto's Early Years Child Care Service. Who said cold? Pardon?
Okay, so you're not. We're not quick-releasing?
Okay, then it's not a quick item. Counselor Moys.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to release MM 3211. MM 32.11. Staff has an amendment.
Okay. MM 3211, you're releasing?
I am.
Okay.
With amendment.
Does the staff have your amendment?
They do.
Okay, there it is on the screen. On favor. Posted, if any, carried. There's another one. Okay. On favor, carried. Item is amended. On favor, carried. Okay, that's it for the quick releases. So we'll now go back to the winter maintenance. If we can put the list back on from yesterday, where we were with the questions? Counselor Chrysante.
Yeah, thank you, Speaker. Okay, just to regroup here. Yeah, just a couple of points of clarification. You know. So nobody's disputed. We had a rough snow season this past season with a number of issues. However, I just want to add, this was challenging, of course, for all Torontonians, challenging for staff, and certainly for Etobicoke North. But the response that I got from staff in Etobicoke North was absolutely phenomenal. I just want to clarify a couple of things. I understand there's been some issues with city contractors using incorrect or the wrong type of machinery that resulted and maybe aggravated the already-existing problem we had. Can you speak to that? Machinery breaking down, for example?
Speaker, that is correct. There were instances where we had challenges with some of the equipment where it was breaking down and we had to swap out parts. And so we were running our yards additional hours so that we could respond to that during the event. But we did have issues with that.
In this machinery, was it our machinery or any of our machinery being used directly? Or all the contractor's machinery?
So Speaker, there were issues with our downtown sidewalk plows, which are the ones that Deputy City Manager Johnston is speaking of. And then the equipment that the contractor uses is their responsibility to source and deliver. And in a 55-centimeter storm, there's always issues with equipment, but we expect them to have it up and ready to operate. So really, the issues with the equipment, I believe, were related to city sidewalk plows largely.
Okay. The two main issues that, of course, were issues that I had dealt with up in Etobicoke North consistently were sidewalk plowing and windrow plowing, specifically where we'd be missing windrow plowing opportunities where people will be unfortunately locked into their homes, you know, for hours before they're able to come out. What do you feel attributed to that? Because I understand there are sensors that you can pick up when a blade is being dropped.
Speaker, that's accurate. There's sensors on the plow blades and the salt spinners that enable our staff to understand when the contractor's equipment is operating. I think one of the issues that was surfaced in the report that was done via the city manager's office is that there is not as much understanding of the actual conditions that are happening in the field consistently. So that might be where you might have seen a situation where the plow blade was up or down, but it may not have resulted in exactly what was the expectation of the homeowner. And then in some cases, things do get missed. And then we would go back to the contractor to address those deficiencies within a prescribed timeframe that's in the contract.
Okay, fair enough. So I just want to make sure we have enough time for this, potentially, the last question here. It was reported that the staff received upwards of about 29,000 calls. I just want to make sure that we're clear and accurate about what's being reported. And that 99% of these calls were ignored. I find that pretty difficult to believe, knowing the kind of service, at least that I got up in Etobicoke North. And we never had any calls that were ignored. We got great response times. Can you clarify this? And what actually happened?
Speaker, I think the first piece to acknowledge is there definitely were some issues. And there's a number of opportunities for us to improve. And we've heard that through the Auditor General's report as well as the city manager's report. However, the data that I have, that's from 311, we did receive. So I'm going to talk about during the month of February, where the issue was most pronounced. We received around 90,000 calls through 311. Of those calls, 29,000 service requests were generated from that. And by the end of February, we had resolved 96% of those. And then by the end of March, we had resolved 99% of those calls.
So the vast majority were resolved and not ignored is the correct answer here?
Well, once again, like I said, definitely there were challenges that we had on that. But this is the data that I have in front of me, which I just repeated.
Okay. That's my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions? I have Counselor Pasternak's name on there, but I don't believe he's here. Do we have any other questions on this before we go to speakers? Okay. So. Mayor Chow, you held the item down. Did you want to speak on it? Mayor Chow? Oh, you don't? Okay. Counselor Holiday to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. I believe there's a supplementary report that I need to move under the audit item. I'm sorry, I don't have the report number in front of me. Only Speaker, just thank you to Madam Auditor General and of course, everyone else involved in studying this. As we all went through the committee, we talked about how important this is to Toronto, how important it is to citizens. I believe there's an enormous amount of information that's floating out there that better informs the city's government about where it needs to look with respect to contract management. I've made those comments already. I think they're reflected in many of the recommendations. And I hope we move forward with this with vigor. Thank you.
Okay. So.
I'm not sure why everyone has to speak. No one listens to each other.
Okay. So the motion by Counselor Holiday on AU 9.6. No. No, that's what I mean. Okay. Okay. Is that. So Counselor Holiday, you've spoken on both items, right?
Sure.
Okay. So we'll go to the next speaker. Counselor Burnside.
I'd like to call the question.
Counselor. Pardon? Okay, Counselor Burnside is calling the question. Has been called. Recorded vote.
Counselor Bravo, please. The motion to end debate does not carry. The vote is 12 to 10. The two-thirds threshold has not been met.
Counselor Candevale to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This was a painful winter, particularly for the seniors in my ward. We had countless calls in distress, being trapped in their home as a result of areas to improve between communication, between snow clearing and window clearing. And this is something incumbent on me to share with council, the experiences many in my ward experience. And it's an observation that I think is, will form a priority as this comes back in the fall. Second, the snow zones or the areas around schools were also of particular concern. One that we unfortunately had to escalate, had to address in a timely manner. And I think as we approach and await the winter maintenance plan, that this is made very clear that it's a priority and standards are recognized and observed. And lastly, I want to conclude with that when it comes to a winter emergency, our approach needs to have the coordination and the communication to serve our city. This creates a culture of distrust when members of our ward, members of our constituency, feel their tax dollars are not addressing the core services that we've committed to provide. So with a comprehensive winter plan that identifies and provides critical service to all areas of the city with flexibility built in to address areas of concern when resources or stretch are critical in this plan coming forward. Thank you, Speaker.
Counselor Myers, yes.
I voted for it. Oh, okay.
Counselor Myers, go ahead.
Thank you, Speaker. Through you. So I would just first like to thank the consultant for their very thorough report. I thought, I highlighted a lot of things that I think will help us move this forward. This is a critical service that a lot of people in the city of Toronto care about. You know, as members of the Toronto Accessibility Advisory Committee expressed, this is of critical importance for them to be able to navigate the city in order to function, in order to get to employment, doctor's appointments, groceries. And when things like sidewalks are not cleared, it might be an inconvenience for many of us. For them, it can be like very serious situations. Also, on behalf of the TTC, I would just like to say for the thousands of people who depend on our buses and our streetcars, it's critically important that we get it right so that we make sure that when we're getting onto the TTC bus or streetcar, you're not expected to go out in the middle of the road because the snow has been piled up so high. It's quite unsafe, and it's very frustrating to a lot of TTC riders. Especially, you're talking, and you're ruining my train of thought. I don't know where I was. Oh, thank you. Okay. Anyways, I would like to though comment on the process for the awarding of the contracts as I still have a lot of serious concerns about how this was done. The fact that there was no fairness monitor used. The fact that staff don't really seem convinced that there should have been a fairness monitor used. The fact that staff, you know, in all these reports back from 2021, seemed to shut down a lot of the concerns that were being raised by councillors, by bidders that were left out. And now that a lot of these concerns have actually come true, it's like, yes, we would still do it again, which to me doesn't really show that we learned anything from this and that we would make the same mistakes again. So that's pretty disappointing, I'm going to be honest. And I wish staff would be more honest and upfront about the failings of the contracts and things we could learn so that we're not put back in this situation again. So I look forward to seeing the full report in November. And I will have more questions and concerns there. But I really hope that this is the beginning of the end of the issue that we've had with these snow clearing contracts. Thank you very much.
Counselor Carroll.
Madam Speaker, part of the reason that I supported the calling of the question earlier, and I know it's too premature for someone to do that again two speakers later, but part of the reason I supported it is we do need to see more action on the audit report. We have attached now, we have the confidential bidding documents, so we can dive in and we can start looking at those. And we can look at the future report on that. But quite frankly, talking about what we're going to see in the November report regards the executive report, the reason I asked, right out of the gate, first thing yesterday morning, I asked the city manager, so how are you going to do this? Are you going to bring us an options report? How many ways are there to improve this? And what he said was, yes, absolutely. And we had better start to manage our expectations about what he might mean about options. Can we afford a Cadillac Montreal-style form of removal? Can we afford it all over town, from city limit to city limit to city limit? No, we cannot. If you do want that, can we afford to even continue windrow clearing? No, we cannot. If you want to have removal proactively programmed into the downtown core, no matter what the size of the storm, just base it on centimeters and always do removal? Can you continue to have the things that were recently added downtown? Sidewalk clearing, window clearing? No, you cannot. So we better start having conversations with our residents about, yes, there is more extreme weather now. And yes, there are things we should do better. But the biggest one that they want is already being acted on immediately right now. And that is changing the way we do response, changing the way people can actually put in their complaints. But we need to start talking to them about, there's an option report coming in November. And yes, we all had a bad time. But what do we want the future state to be? Because if you want it all, then you're looking down the barrel of another 1, 2, maybe 3, 10%, 12% property tax increases for something that might happen every winter. Might not. But if you want to pay for it and contract for it just in case it happens, then you better be prepared to announce a whopping big property tax increase to buy the equipment. then you better be prepared to announce a whopping big property tax increase to buy the equipment, to renegotiate contracts, to provide the same thing to everybody from Steels and Don Mills to Deputy Mayor Malik's ward, two very different kinds of terrain. You'd better get ready for what that's going to cost. And if not, it's time to go back to our wards, and I would suggest that in the warm weather, when people can be calm about it, it's a good time to have real talk, have real talk with your residents about what are the deal breakers? What do we need in our neighborhood? The real deal breakers, not all of it, but what must we have and what can we live without in order to get the best of the thing we must have? That's the conversation you should be able to have, because you're people with the gift of gab, you're councillors. You know how to talk to your community, but have a real talk with your community. Don't promise them that they can have the Cadillac snow removal program that doesn't exist anywhere in the world and that every person and every truck will walk, talk, chew gum, and spit nickels, and everything will be cleared off the street in the first 12 hours. Because you can't afford it. So ask them what it is they must have, and then come back here and look at an option report in November that will give you price tags for those things that you really need. Those are my comments, Madam Speaker.
Councillor Peruzzi.
You know, we've been having this conversation for a very, very long time, for as long as I can remember anyways. And the conversation goes like this. Every winter, we got a couple of really, really bad snowfalls, a couple, not many, two, three, sometimes even fewer. One year we didn't get any. And when we get those really big snowfalls, what happens? We can't clear the snow. This isn't rocket science. And it's not about blaming our staff. They've done well with what we've given them. It's not their fault, it's our fault. So picture this. You got a big mountain of snow. You get a guy, you give him a shovel that works, and you say, Joe, move the snow. And they go and they move the snow, they work diligently, they work hard, and it takes 10 days to move that pile of snow. Well, you can do this. Then you can get 10 guys, give them all a shovel that works, and say, move the same pile of snow, and they'll move it in a day. Right? That's what we're talking about. It's not rocket science. You just don't have, so we spend 100, now we're at $150 million on this, or thereabout, maybe a little more. We get between 1,000 and 1,500 people, people power, that come down, swoop down, with some equipment, not all the right shovels, not all the right, you know, stuff that's going to work. Right? And then we expect when the big snowfall comes, the big storms that come hard and fast and freeze, can't move it, takes a long time, freezes, and we got to wait for Mother Nature to help us out, for the warmer weather to actually get rid of the snow. Why do we do that? Because we basically don't want to pay pension or benefits to really have an employee base to actually clear the snow. We think we bring crafting smart. So we do that in the winter, 150 million bucks, we can't move the snow. These guys sit in our worksyards most of the winter and sleep it off. At $150 million worth. Right? Because when the non-events, they're just sitting around doing nothing. They're not fixing potholes, they're not running around hot boxes. We got a million potholes. Your roads are breaking down all over the place because of freezing and thawing and all the rest of it, and you're pouring hundreds of millions of dollars in that, in asphalt and maintenance and the rest of it. But no, you know why? Because we don't want these guys on our payroll. Then in the summertime, we hire a whole bunch of other guys, seasonal, from April to the fall, to cut the grass, clip, and not be able to empty out garbage bins in parks. Why? Because we don't have the personnel. We don't got the people. We blow our brains out on that, because we think we're smart. Why? Because we don't want to pay pension or benefits, and we don't want to have, you know, a fulsome workforce with the right equipment to deal with all of this stuff year-round. Imagine having all of those people in the wintertime with the shovels moving that pile of snow. Right? On those days when you get the big snowstorms. Imagine when the snow is down and out, they're, you know, running around with hot boxes, filling the million potholes all over our roads, right? Imagine having a good maintenance program on our roads that, you know, then you don't have to blow your brains out on asphalt, fixing them all up, right? And, you know, sort of, you know, faster and. Imagine then those folks, you know, jumping on the lawn mowers and cutting the grass, clipping the trees, and cleaning the garbage bins out of the parks in the summertime. Imagine having a clean city. It's a question of priorities. And it's a question of what is it that you want to do and want to do well? And if you don't think that these are things that we as a city council should be doing and doing well, well, I got news for you. You know, the people you represent, they want you to do this stuff real, real well. They want this to be the priority. They want you to remove the snow when it falls hard and fast. Clear the city, make it work. And then they want you to cut the grass, clip the trees, and do all that other stuff, and clean out the garbage bins in the parks. Imagine having a city like that. Yeah, and you pay a few pension benefits and some, and some other stuff. Right? And you do the work. You know whose fault it is?
Five seconds.
And it isn't, you keep doing it like this, you get the same result.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You're done, councillor Peruzzi? You're done? Okay, sit down. Councillor Mantis.
Madam Speaker.
To speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Come on, guys, we have to finish the agenda.
Certain comments before, I agree with you, Anthony. It sounded like we were going to the oracle of Delphi, telling our residents that we are going to be cutting service. I refuse to do that. I agree with Anthony, with councillor Peruzzi, with his comments. What we need to do is sit together and find solutions to how to make our service better. When over 40% of our population are elderly, we cannot afford to tell our residents, sorry, but we can't shovel or clear your windrows. That's unacceptable. So we need to find ways how to make our service better. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Can you put the item on the agenda? EX, EX 25.5. Do we have any motions? Okay, on the item, EX 25.5. On favor, pose if any carried. On AU 9.6, we do have a motion by councillor Holliday. We'll put that on the screen. There it is, by councillor Holliday, on favor, show of hands, pose if any carried. Item is amended, on favor, carry. Thank you very much to the staff. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to the top. We're going to go to the top of agenda, NY 24.5. Councillor Cheng.
Yes, I have a motion.
Okay, we can put the motion on the screen.
But I'm not certain where the motion is.
It's 221, 237 Finch.
Yes, I submitted it to clerks already.
Okay, we'll put it on the screen.
I want to thank staff for their hard work on this.
Okay, let's just put the motion on the screen. Okay. Okay, we'll move to another item. Councillor Fletcher. Councillor Fletcher? Councillor Fletcher? You're not ready for? Okay, we're not ready for you. EX 25.14, Deputy Mayor Malik, Connect TO, do you want to release that? Where's your item? Go ahead.
Councillor Cheng has put forward a motion. It has been advanced circulated. We can vote on it and release this.
Have we circulated this motion?
Yes, yeah, it's up.
Okay, we'll put it up. Motion by councillor Cheng on EX 2514. Recorded vote.
Councillor Peruzzi, councillor Ainsley, please. Councillor Fletcher, please, and councillor Peruzzi, please. Councillor Fletcher, please.
Councillor Fletcher, they're waiting for your vote. Okay, councillor Peruzzi, councillor Carroll, stop fighting.
Motion one carries. The vote is 18 to 5.
Okay, item is amended, on favor, carried. Okay, just a sec, just a sec. We're going through, we're going through the, we're going to the top of the agenda right now. Okay. The next, we're starting at the top of the agenda. The next one is councillor Bravo, the Coyotes. Oh, but didn't somebody have a? Councillor Candevale, you still have questions on Toronto's childcare services? Okay. Who do you have the questions to? The staff? All right. Okay, can you put your name on the list, on the list, please? Okay, councillor Candevale, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and to staff. Can staff share how priorities and priority levels for wards, how are they identified when it comes to childcare need?
Through the speaker, yes, I can speak to that. So Children's Services has a long history of planning for growth. We look at each ward and we take into consideration the population of children in that ward as well as the population of children and families living in low income. So that becomes, that data, along with the number of childcare centers in the ward, helps us identify where we need to grow. On top of that, the province introduced an access and inclusion framework in the past couple of years, which supports growth in those areas with newcomer populations, indigenous families, children with special needs, et cetera. So targeting those areas with the most vulnerable families.
How would you describe and capture the inequity of childcare in Scarborough Southwest?
Through the speaker, Scarborough Southwest is definitely identified as a high-needs area for childcare, meaning they do not have the same access as other areas of the city. I'll point out, though, childcare really is needed everywhere, but your ward is actually identified as a red ward, meaning growth in childcare in that ward is a priority.
Thank you. And what are the plans or intentions behind expansion for this obviously critical service?
The two things are happening. We have a childcare growth strategy that was adopted by council, which over the past five years has been adding spaces to the system. Additionally, we have some capital funding from the province through the Canada Wide Program, and so those resources are being used to identify opportunities to expand in the high-priority wards.
And within the five-year plan, are there significant opportunities for expansion in my ward?
The challenge in terms of expansion, councillor and through the speaker, is that there has to be obviously space identified, there has to be operators, and there has to be capital. The city of Toronto supports expansion in the not-for-profit sector, and it's very difficult for not-for-profit operators to come up with the capital to build. So that's where we support them with resources, but each ward does have a plan for growth.
In addition to the nonprofit strategy, do we provide resources, supports for home childcare providers as an alternative solution?
Yes, through the speaker, absolutely. Home childcare is an important and viable option. And in fact, the city of Toronto itself has one of the largest home childcare agencies, and we also support those other agencies.
When you look at equity and where we place our resources, we have some childcare centers that are situated in upper SES neighborhoods. What is staffs thinking at looking at an approach to redistribute part of where, from areas of need, to, from areas that with, you know, with resource into areas with need? What's the thinking behind that strategic approach?
Right, through the speaker, the.
Sorry, hold on one second. Speaker, there's a lot of chatter going on. Can you ask?
Okay, everyone stop talking.
Thank you, thank you. In terms of relocating childcare, although we do identify wards in terms of the highest, medium, and low priority, we recognize that every area, based on the population and the number of children in low income, every area in the city requires childcare. So we wouldn't typically relocate a childcare from one community to another.
I recognize that there, all neighborhoods need childcare, but if we're using scarce city resources, isn't there an argument to be made that it should be directed to communities that are in need and inequity as opposed to, say, privileged communities?
Through the speaker, the growth strategy that we reported on recently does prioritize wards that are red, or, so when people apply to grow childcare, that's part of the consideration. And when we get applications, they would certainly be prioritized at the top of the list.
Thank you. Councillor Cheng.
Thank you. Through the speaker, over the past, let's say, 10 years, how much has the budget for early on increased for provision of services to match the growth of our city?
Through the speaker, the early-on programs were transferred to the city of Toronto in 2018. They are 100% provincially funded. Since that transfer, there has been a very small investment related to mental health. But other than that, there has been no investment for growth in the early-on programs in Toronto.
And has there been feedback that it's very difficult for a lot of new moms to get into the available programs?
Sure, absolutely. That is consistently, and we have made motions from this council before, asking for additional funding, index funding, it's very important. The province is currently completing a review of the early-on programs, so we continue to advocate for the ability to grow and to. to advocate for the ability to grow and to index funding.
The Qualk program and the $10 daycare promise that we all put our hope on, it was created to... Because in recognition of a lot of families, our working families, and that cost is quite a burden, but oftentimes, you know, after their kids go to school, the cost of before and after-school care suddenly is also quite a heavy load. Has there ever been consideration by the federal government to include before and after-school care so that families can afford to have dual incomes and not have to figure out how to support their children in those times?
Through the speaker, yes, absolutely. You know, those requests have been made to the province. In terms of fees for school age, we do encourage and reach out to families to say that there are fee subsidies available for them if their children age out of a kindergarten room, but there is no commitment neither now nor in the future for further investments for six to 12 at this point, either from the provincial or federal governments.
So we just kind of disappear from the map once your child ages out. In the report, there's this map with red zones across the city. My ward is one of them, and as Counselor Candevale pointed out, you know, we really want that capital investment. I'm just wondering, what role do private daycares play in adding to the availability of Qualk daycares?
So when you're talking about private, are you talking about commercial childcare?
Commercial childcare, yes.
So if you look at the guideline... Well, you wouldn't look at them, but I can tell you, the guidelines from the province and the feds are very clear that expansion happened in the not-for-profit sector first. There is a small ratio that's allowed for commercial, but it is about 70% not-for-profit in Toronto and about 30% commercial, and we cannot exceed that ratio. That's set by the province.
Once upon a time, the city was easy... Had an easier time adding new daycares through Section 37. What have you seen now, after Section 37? What does that landscape look like in terms of our ability to add new daycares through development?
The city... Children's Services has a 10-year capital plan. There are still a number of projects on that plan that are being supported through development funds. It is one of the levers that we have been able to use to grow childcare. We will continue to request and explore opportunities to do that wherever possible.
Has there been a change, though, from Section 37 to community benefits in terms of our ability to create new daycares?
There hasn't been a direct impact on us yet, but I think that that may be future, given that we had a number of projects in the plan that were committed. But going forward, if there's less money, it obviously impacts the ability to build a full childcare center.
So what are the key sources of funding that we are looking for or have already secured in order to expand our daycare capacity in the city?
So the city funds childcare through a very variety of sources. So we have our 10-year capital plan that relies on development charges, Children's Services Capital Reserve. We also work closely with our school board partners around expansions where the province funds the school board directly, but we're part of that expansion. And we currently have some startup funds available from the province to start up childcare, as well as a new infrastructure fund that was just recently announced by the federal government. The application for the infrastructure and the growth for 2025 is on our website. It's been launched, and we are expecting those applications to come in, and that will determine where we can grow.
Thank you. Counselor, remind members of council, we're going to have to defer the whole agenda to October.
Well, actually, I'm not even sure why I'm asking these questions, Madam Speaker, because I was asking them for the benefit of another council who's not in the room now. Very quickly, Ms. McHammy, for how many years have you been mapping where the gaps in Children's Services are in the City of Toronto and looking for ways to realize spaces in those neighborhoods? For how many years?
Counselor, since I've been with the division, 25-plus years. We have always considered equity in terms of growth and planning.
Okay. And where you can't realize a childcare center, where there are nothing but the affluent centers in the affluent neighborhoods, how do you go about realizing subsidized spaces in those childcare centers?
So currently, the city has fee subsidy agreements with a number of programs, but not all. And that was really related to a historic directive from council that there be no expansion in the commercial. In our service plan, which is in front of you today, we are going to be coming back to council in the fall and talking about that expansion. Now that those commercial operators are part of the system, they're receiving 40... You know, 40 to 70% of government funding, we feel that they should have a fee subsidy agreement so they can be available to all families, but we'll have to bring them on board. It's a heavy lift.
Right, and that's the very nature of the service plan, so that in some of those gap areas, those centers that have been remaining aloof from the system might come in to realize some of those Qualk funds.
That's right, and not just the Qualk funds, but families who need a fee subsidy would then have access to more centers.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, Madam Speaker.
I'm going to call the question, Madam Speaker.
Okay, well, you were the last... We're just asking questions now. Okay, let's go to the speakers. Counselor Bravo, you held it down. Are you going to speak? Counsel... Sorry, Counselor Bravo. Come on, we... Okay, go ahead.
No, I don't need to speak. I just hope everyone read this as a strategic document with a lot more details to follow. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I think we have motions already made up, correct?
Yeah, they've been circulated.
They've been circulated. Were we waiting for one more? Okay, so why don't we just vote on it? Put the motions on the screen. Well, I... Does anybody want to speak on it? Counselor Moise, you need to speak? Huh?
I'm going to call the question.
Okay, excellent.
Moise has called the question. Recorded vote. We've got a lot of items still on the agenda, guys. Yeah. And let's just start releasing. We're going to defer the items to October.
Counselor Crisanti, can we have your vote when you get to your seat, please? Thank you. Counselor Perutsa, please. Counselor Burnside, please. The motion to end debate carries. The vote is eighteen to four.
Okay, so let's put the motions on... The motion on the screen. Motion by Counselor Chang. On favor, both of any carried. Item is amended. On favor, both of any carried. Thank you. Counselor Bravo, we have the coyotes next.
Questions of staff. Thank you, Speaker. To Carlton. Is the removal of coyotes effective in managing urban coyote populations, and does this strategy address those contributing factors that are the more proactive and effective ways to manage coyotes?
Thank you for the question. The short answer is no. The best strategy is coexistence, and the best strategy is to identify and know what those root causes are and focus proactively on those root causes, which is dogs off-leash, feeding of wildlife, not picking up after dogs, and generally, those are the main factors.
Great, because coyotes are not pests like rats, which we didn't debate because we adopted that other item, they're actually wildlife, correct?
Through the speaker, that's correct.
When all other options have been exhausted, this strategy does outline a procedure for removal. This includes a criteria to guide staff's assessment, but acknowledges that circumstances will vary case by case. Is it important to have that discretion in order to follow best practices?
Absolutely. We need the flexibility and the ability for our strategy to adapt based on the situation by situation. Having too strict of criteria is not helpful. The strategy already has eight criteria that are well-defined. It is a living document that's a strategy that we'll review continuously and continuously improve.
And can you confirm that setting specific thresholds for removal isn't, in fact, supported by best practices reviews that you've done?
That's correct. It's not a best practice in municipalities in North America, and it's not supported.
Thank you.
Counselor Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Grant, I appreciate the answers that you just gave my colleague, and I certainly agree that most coyotes can exist... Coexist with humans and pests. But it's... Let's talk about Liberty Village. You and your team put a lot of effort and money into trying to stop the killing of pets in Liberty Village. Staff tried, specialists, contractors tried, but isn't it true that the only thing that stopped the attacks on pets was culling those two particular coyotes which had acquired the habit of killing pets?
A number of factors went into that decision. I think what's important to note is that the killing of coyotes in this instance, and it's very common, the root cause, which I spoke to in my previous answer, is what... In this... In the Liberty Village case, coyotes have come back because it's a natural wildlife corridor and there are food sources.
But, Mr. Grant, I'm not asking you about that. I recognize that there are root causes, there's a lot of work that you have to do. My point is that there are... Once coyotes have learned to attack pets or humans, what our Liberty Village experience showed that the only thing that stopped them was culling those two particular coyotes. The other coyotes that were living in the area, including their own pups, weren't a problem, but those two coyotes had to be killed before the attacks stopped. Isn't that true?
Again, I wouldn't characterize it that way. Again, I feel strongly that it's based on the root causes, and I'll defer to the Chief Veterinarian, Dr. Attard, to expand on that answer.
Well, but that's another question I asked. Let me try it another way. How much did the city spend trying to re-educate and deter these two particular coyotes before they were culled?
I don't have that information before us today.
Okay, but in the meantime, there were months when there were attacks on pets. Isn't the lesson that we should learn from this, that once a coyote has attacked a human or a pet, we need to move more swiftly to culling problem coyotes? Not coyotes generally, but ones that have attacked humans or pets?
I would disagree.
It isn't uncommon for coyotes to attack dogs because they are... They are... Sorry, they are in their territory and they are competing for food, and so it isn't uncommon for that to happen, and so routinely, coyotes are not culled for that reason.
Well, I think that's exactly the concern that my constituents have, is that if we have coyotes that do attack pets or animals, we then seem to let many, many months go by before we bring those attacks to an end. Isn't that exactly what happened in Liberty Village? Months and months went by before the attacks were brought to an end?
To the speaker, that isn't exactly what happened. We had to identify and investigate because those things, again, as I said before, can happen routinely because of competition and food resources that the coyotes will go after, and the dogs are competing for... They see them as competitors for that. So the decision that we made was not just for... Because they were attacking pets, it's because things were escalating, and sometimes it takes time to figure that out, and sometimes coyotes will move on and move away, depending on the strategies that you're employing. So that is why we take the time to review and to investigate so that we are doing... Making the correct decision.
Are you suggesting that people living in the city should accept that coyotes are going to routinely attack them and their pets?
To the speaker, I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm just suggesting that in certain circumstances, that can happen because there are root causes that are causing that, and if we can't remove those or have the community participate in, you know, stopping feeding and in keeping dogs on leash and those kinds of things that make the coyotes reactive and defensive, then we can have conflicts that we have to manage, and sometimes we have to remove them in a lethal manner.
Thank you. Counselor Fletcher.
Just a... I'm just going to follow up on a little bit of that and just... Is not each case... Where are you? Over there? Each case, I would say, is quite different. Each situation becomes different, and this was a very unique situation because these coyotes had come from the displacement from Ontario Place where their habitat. So what... Is that not correct? So we had a unique situation, getting a little too used to things, coming after humans, and would you not agree that we should really look at each situation distinctly rather than have a matrix of, okay, this is this behavior, this is this behavior, and now X and Y has to happen?
Absolutely. We need to look at things situation by situation, site by site, location by location, and we need to utilize our strategy and our... The criteria in our strategy to help us make decisions, and then we also need to consult and work with partners and other municipalities and best practices in the province on this very complex matter.
Yes, because each situation might find it to be quite different, so you can't measure... Have a measurement... Standard measurement for each situation across the city.
That's correct. The way I've tried to characterize this when explaining it is this is not a construction project, this does not have a Gantt chart. It's just every day is different, and we monitor closely, and we act and react accordingly.
I'd say it's kind of in the same sense of... For animals, for dangerous dogs, that each time you're reviewing how dangerous that dog is, whether or not it needs the order, first, second bite, all those kinds of things as to whether or not it gets an order or whether or not it would be euthanized, let's say. So you can't... And you don't have a standard Gantt chart for that. Your officers are looking at that in a particular way.
Absolutely. It would be the same where we look at it situation by situation, dog, person, dog by dog. We look at it very carefully, and we investigate, and we talk to everyone involved in it to understand what happened, and then take the appropriate action.
But if a dog has bitten people multiple times, then you would probably look at that situation differently than a nip somewhere.
Absolutely.
But that's going to be up to the situation, and yes.
That's correct.
Now, this isn't... This is a very serious question. Would you think we should source some acne products in order to help you?
Yes, I am old enough to know that reference, and that would be great.
Good, thank you.
Counselor Burnside.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, too, enjoy the Wiley-Ee Coyote reference. I have a question, I think, for Mr. Carlton, because I don't know the exact numbers. I'm not looking for exact numbers, I'm looking for a ratio. If you look at the coyote attacks, of which Counselor Sacks referred, what is it... What was the ratio of coyotes attacking dogs to coyotes attacking humans? Was it one for one? Okay. So based on that, would you not say conflating coyote attacks on dogs with coyote attacks, attacks on humans is a bit of an interesting technique, maybe somewhat disingenuous to, to compare, compare humans or cluster humans in with dogs when it comes to coyote attacks?
To the speaker, yeah. We would, we would not cluster dogs and humans in to get together. It's very different and it's a very different approach if a human is attacked versus a dog attack.
Okay, sure. That's, that's what I would have assumed. I appreciate that. So what's in coyotes mating season?
Sorry. To the speaker, it's January to February.
Okay. So in that time, you would expect any animal that got close to their den, they'd be maybe a little extra aggressive?
To the speaker, yes. We, we see those seasonal, seasonal things when it's mating season, when they have pups. We may see increased conflicts if they, if people and dogs go near a den.
So, yeah, just so, and the reason I ask that question, just to confirm, it was really more to reinforce Counselor Fletcher's question in that each situation is quite unique and in fact can be unique just to the time of year.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bravo, do you want to speak?
No, no, I have a question. I'm on the list.
Pardon?
I'm on the list.
Oh, well, she didn't have her name when I, did you add it on the last minute?
Well, after.
Well, wasn't on my list. Okay, do you want to, do you want to go back and put a name on?
There.
Okay. She, she put it on after this last speaker. Deputy Mayor Malik.
Thank you very much. This is for MLS staff. There's been a lot of talk about Liberty Village and we worked very closely to address the unprecedented experience that, that the neighborhood was having with coyotes as an outcome of redevelopment at Ontario Place that did not follow good development and planning practices, that did not have an environmental assessment, and therefore had no preparation for the neighborhood or the community for what displaced wildlife might do and where they might show up. So can you please speak to some of the unprecedented aspects of the experience that we had over the last winter and, and spring in Liberty Village until there was a resolution?
So, thank you for the question. I, I will start by saying that the, the report addresses some of what we've learned and what we found as a result of the work in Liberty Village, specifically to ensure that the province is made aware and that they are, and we are sending a note up to Queen's Park about ESAs. We're also going to be working very closely with our partners in city planning and development and growth on, to ensure that wildlife corridors are maintained. They are part of the planning process so that we are not displacing wildlife, because wildlife has coexisted in our city as long as it's been here. And the situation in Liberty Village was exacerbated because of the sheer number of pets, the sheer number of people, and a lot of the issues around the wildlife corridor with fences not being repaired. So we did a lot of work with fencing signage with a lot of our partners in public health and parks and recreation. And we learned a lot from the Liberty Village situation.
And some of the challenges in the dense community was also the limited green space. Because as we know, coyotes are not new to Toronto. They are in many different parts of the city. But we'd never seen them in this way and with this experience in a dense tall building downtown community like Liberty Village. Is that right?
That is correct. Wildlife needs space to, to have, for the, to have the dens, to have the pups. And, and we also need the people in the vertical communities to be able to have places to, to recreate and to walk their pets.
And the, the progression, the threshold, that, that was very frustrating. You, you heard about that experience, as did I, and took it very seriously from the, from the very start. What became clear was because this is not an experience that we have contended with in the city of Toronto previously, that there were additional measures and expertise that the city staff had to engage in order to set out a series of steps in order to resolve this issue. Is that correct? And can you speak to that a little bit?
Absolutely. And I'm, I'm very, it was a very challenging file, so to speak, for months and months. I feel very comfortable with how we proceeded with the expert panel, with eight experts from across the country, with a combination of 100 years of experience in this. It confirmed that we were following municipal best practices. It, it doesn't mean it wasn't challenging. It was a very long, difficult situation and one we've learned a lot from.
And with that experience, moving forward, I do hear the concern about the timeliness, about acting, about how each threshold prompts another action, and to make sure that that is not drawn out in a way that's harmful to communities, to pets, and especially to people in our neighborhoods. So can you share with me what that experience has now set out in the report in front of us, particularly for downtown communities, but right across the city, and how it helps us have an approach that is much clearer, that is expert-driven, and much more timely? Because I do see that that is a question.
Yeah. And so we have established two documents, one a downtown action plan and as well as a citywide strategy, both of which have a, a table in them which allows us to guide our decision-making. Again, it's based on best practice. It still needs some flexibility with timelines, and, and that's, that's something we'll continue to work on. We did learn a lot from the Liberty Village experience and the fact that it was drawn out. Our, our decision-making, while it will be site-specific and situation by situation, I think our decision-making and our learning about decision-making was significantly improved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are the end of the speakers. And I'm just going to note, Counselor Cheng, are you here?
Yes.
There's just, eventually, you just have to get that NY 24.4 because there's bills on that. So it would be helpful if you're ready to release that, that we can then, the clerks can get the bills ready so we don't lose quorum because it's one of those ones we have to do. So if you don't mind, everybody, we'll just move to that for, are you ready to do that, counselor?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
This is NY 24.4.
Sorry, one sec. I've got to get that on there. Okay, go for it.
So this is a, a motion. We've worked very well with the applicant as well as the local community to come up with this set of recommendations. And I am grateful for the applicant that went to do site business with the local community and staff for working through this. Thank you.
So you're moving those, counselor?
Yes, I am.
All right. Can I get everybody in favor of these motions? Please signify.
It's a bit of an mega motion.
Opposed. That's carried. That's the item.
Yes, that is.
And that's carried. Thank you. And the clerks can now prepare the bills for that. And then the other item that needs bills is the cycling item. And if those motions are all in, then is that ready to go, your motion, counselor? And then we could move the whole thing along. Deputy Mayor, you're going to move that motion now, please. Thank you. One sec, thanks. There you go. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. My motion should be on the screen.
See the motion? All, sorry, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, sorry. We, we voted on three of the motions. It's just mine that's outstanding.
Oh, there, so we have to vote on all of them. Okay, so we'll vote on this one first. All those in favor. Sorry, one sec. Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Malik, there is the motion in front of you for IE 23.6. This is in order to get the bills ready. All in favor? Opposed. That's carried. Thank you. Yes, please. Counselor Bravo, did she table that motion already?
Yes.
Okay. So now we're just going to vote on that. All in favor? Opposed. That's carried. Next motion. My motion, amendments to parking regulations on Logan. All in favor? Opposed. That's carried. Thank you. Yes, please. Counselor Bravo, did she table that motion already?
Yes.
Okay. So now we're just going to vote on that. All in favor? Opposed. That's carried. Next motion. My motion, amendments to parking regulations on Logan. All in favor? Opposed. That's carried. And then the last one on this item. Is there any more? Oh, there it is. There. Counselor Candeval. All in favor? Opposed. That's carried. Counselor Pasternak, are you online? Because Counselor Pasternak has not placed that motion. Are you online, counselor? If not, item as amended. All in favor? Opposed. That's carried. Thank you. And now the bills can be prepared. Thank you for your indulgence with that. And now turn this back over to the speaker to continue with the coyotes. No. We're done with the bills for those items so they can prepare them. For the coyotes? Okay. Counselor Carroll.
No, I'm just, I'm off the list. I'm, I'm tapping up.
Okay, good. Counselor Holiday on the coyotes. Okay.
Thank you, Speaker. I want to express my thanks to staff. Members may realize that it was a letter to the committee from me that in part started this process. Members, about a year ago, there was a number of coyote attacks in the Tobico Centre. One of the citizens was injured, and that goes to show you how serious this is. I, I am very appreciative because one of the things that we discovered in that process was that there was a lack of clarity and understanding and expectation setting about what the city's role is in dealing with coyotes. And we know there's people at both ends of the spectrum. Some want the animals to be left alone, and some want to see the animals destroyed immediately. And everything else exists in between, and this brings clarity. If there's one ask that I have coming out of this process, and that is for 311 to look at the processes around reporting coyote interactions, I, I've made a similar comparison to noise complaints. It'd be great to be able to put a pushpin on a map for very low-risk types of reporting that simply become aggregate data because it helps MLS do their job better. And when things become more serious, there's a, there's a process to articulate a more serious interaction and elicit a more serious response. But I found the, the report before us very, very helpful, and I wanted to make sure that I expressed my appreciation for all the work that was done. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sacks?
Yes, thank you. I have a motion. My motion, I am making it the very strong and repeated request from people in my ward. We, we heard a little bit about the long period of time that elapsed in Liberty Village between the first occurrence of attacks and the removal of the two coyotes who were at fault for the attacks. And since they were culled, their, my understanding is there have been no further attacks in Liberty Village. And so my community is asking for a clearer threshold and criteria so that when aggressive animals are attacking humans or pets, that we get a prompt response. And so I am bringing that request from my community to council tonight and asking that we ask staff to go back and look for opportunities to make this more clear. I'm not asking for a report back to council. We heard from Mr. Grant that this is a living document that they review regularly, and my request is simply that they do that in some point in this year, see if there is an opportunity to clarify the threshold and criteria. Thank you.
Thanks, Speaker. So this strategy that staff have brought for us builds on the work that's completed, been completed over the last year to respond to the reported incidents of human coyote encounters across Toronto, including the Downtown Coyote Action Plan. And I just want to be clear that there have been some very significant instances that we've heard about in this city, at the same time that coyote sightings citywide have fallen to 1,883 from 3,729 in 2022. So that's a significant reduction in coyote sightings, you know, roughly half. But the city remains focused on the issues that will ensure that people are safe and that pets are safe. It's a reality that coyotes are going to be in Toronto forever because it's wildlife. It's like having raccoons around. It's having birds. We live in a city, but the city is located on land, and that land includes animals. And animal life is, is something that we have to learn to live with and respect. That's what wildlife is. This strategy is responsible. It implements industry best practices. There's been a wide study of that. You've heard from the chief veterinarian about the particular behavior and needs of coyotes as wildlife, is that we need to understand what is the standard for cities like Toronto to find the best solution. It's, it's also a strategy that respects the expert work of our staff in municipal licensing and standards and animal services to make determinations about solutions needed for the unique situations that we're going to be facing. In the questions from my colleagues, including Counselor Burnside and Counselor Fletcher, no two situations are exactly the same, and experts should have discretion. With that in mind, I won't be supporting the motion from Counselor Sacks, given what I've heard from our experts and about the, the scan of best practices that has been brought to you, and that I, I believe that we really need the, they need the freedom to be able to make determinations in case-specific situations. I, I'm certain that the level of detail in this strategy is, it does provide solid ground to stop, and that any further evaluation of this plan should be done in a holistic way, following the implementation of the strategy. We've been studying this a lot. We need, we found the solutions, and let's give them time to work before, I think, we bring more complications and more work and more benchmarks and thresholds that are not applicable and according to what we are hearing here in this situation. So I want to thank staff for all their hard work in this last year. It's been a lot. And just before I, I, I stop, I'll say coyotes also eat rats. So thanks.
Want to speak on it? I'm just going to speak really quickly. And what I, all I want to do is really recognize the very hard work of Deputy Mayor Malik in a really difficult situation in her ward, something that I don't think any of us have faced, and the growing issue of the number of aggressive coyotes, the bites, the escalation, and that she had to work very, very hard in a very contained area with the neighbors and everyone else in a difficult situation. So I just wanted to say thank you for trailblazing that, Deputy Mayor. It wasn't easy. And then I just want to, because I didn't have a chance this morning, recognize Carlton Grant. This is his last meeting, late at night, but this is all the animal issues that you've had to deal with, Carlton. And I just want to thank you for that. They're really been testing the city and our ability to respond to difficult issues with, with animals, wild animals in the cases of the coyotes. And I know this was not an easy file, trying to figure out what to do. And you tried everything possible, and at the end of the day, there was only one solution. for these ones that we showed are getting more and more and more aggressive. But at the same time, to thank you for all your work on dangerous dogs and just an amazing set of work for you, for our beloved pets, because they're very well behaved, but some aren't. And so making sure that everybody is safe from wild animals and poorly behaved pets. I know it's not all you've done. You've done an awful lot in your career, but because we're talking about this, I just wanted to take this moment to thank you very much on behalf of everybody here. Thank you. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Malik.
Thank you very much. I also want to start by expressing appreciation for staff on this report and your work over the past several months, particularly in resolving the unprecedented situation with coyotes in our downtown communities over this past winter and spring as a result of displacement of wildlife from the Ontario Place redevelopment. I really want to extend my appreciation to Carlton, to Ginny, to Esther, and to the whole team who took on this issue with seriousness and deliberation and in terms of engaging the expertise and the support, even in the most challenging moments, to make sure that we were communicating clearly as a city with the community, even when it was hard to hear and even when the solutions and the next steps were ones that we were working towards together. To be able to share that, to be able to demonstrate that was very critical, and it has allowed us to be in a place where we are receiving this report. It provides an enormous amount of clarity about how we manage situations like this, if we find ourselves in them again. And we know that the experience of communities and populations right across our city and wildlife are becoming more commonplace, and we need the tools as a city, and staff need to be able to have the powers and the ability to enact those tools in the appropriate way. I also want to thank Will Johnston, Jill Batta, and Kate Basil for their work with our teams and our communities in moving the issue forward, and that we benefit from all those efforts in the report in front of us. I will express the incredible heartbreak and loss of pets, pets who are harmed, communities that were feeling uncertain and fearful around their routines, around their public and green spaces that we rely on, especially in tall-building communities. And my commitment was to work with residents to ensure that they have the information that they need, that their feedback was part of our considerations and our next steps, that the expertise that we were engaging as a city was reflected in the actions and the speed with which we brought forward a resolution. And thank you to everyone in my community, and I will speak to you directly, to who showed their care and commitment in this experience and in this incredibly difficult situation. And as the local councillor for downtown communities where we had this experience, I have spent a long time working on this issue, as many of you know. I worked with those community members, with dozens of staff, and with stakeholders to resolve this unprecedented situation. And I also want to thank my colleagues who brought their experiences to bear, knowing that coyotes are not new to the city, but the experience in each neighborhood is not the same. And I particularly want to thank Counselor Holliday, Counselor Carroll, and Counselor Fletcher, who spoke to me about their experiences, shared their advice, and worked on this issue to move us to something better that we have in front of us, an actual approach that meets and matches what we're experiencing in our neighborhoods when it comes to coyotes. I want to share that I'm encouraged to see that many of the learnings in that experience is reflected in this report, of course, our Coyote Downtown Action Plan, but the need to be more proactive and treat interactions with urgency, that is so critical, extensive research and advice provided by the top experts in this field across the country and in other jurisdictions, a clear escalation protocol. We did not have this six months ago, and this is a very important outcome to equip staff to take the next steps according to clear criteria that has been set out in the report and to work without delay, and how we can address ongoing issues like waste management and proactive by law enforcement, and to have the provincial government step up to their responsibility. And what has been so important from our experience is that we, as a city, take a pet-friendly approach to safety and education. I moved a number of motions at committee focused on us continuing to learn and be responsive. This continues to be a priority for me, and I too, like Counselor Bravo, I'm very looking forward to seeing how the steps that we have set out in the report in front of us and in this approach actually are responsive to our community's needs and what we're seeing right now. I will be advocating for the wildlife response team during our budget process. This will make a real difference to our ability to respond to situations like this in the future in a quick and clear way, to avoid continued escalations or prolonging of the experience, and to proactively address wildlife conflicts in our city, to work towards that coexistence that we know is so critical.
Okay, can we put the motion on the screen, please? Recorded vote.
Counselor Chrysanty, can we get your vote, please? Counselor Pritzker, please. Motion one does not carry. The vote is 10 to 12.
On the item? On favor? Members of council? Counselor Morley needs to leave because there's been a death in the family, so she wants to deal with her item, CC 3220. Permission that we can move that item up? On favor? Carry. Counselor Morley?
Thanks, Madam Speaker. Thank you to colleagues. I was going to try to speak from the heart the second time around here, but I might mess it up, and I'm a little distraught. So I'm going to stick to the notes here so I don't miss anything. And this is a really big and important contentious file that we've been spending an incredible amount of time on in my ward and with my team, and shout out to my colleague Matt for all of his great work and support. So I'm just going to speak on, I have put forward some confidential motions. If colleagues can please take a look at those. We worked with the residents' association on those, and they are part of the confidential attachment, so I can't speak to the details. So on this, I can't support the settlement proposal before us today. I will be voting against the confidential recommendations and hope that you will consider my comments as you decide how you will vote. This development application has been problematic and contentious since it was initially submitted to the city in April 23. The site is currently home to five apartment buildings totaling 548 rental units, making it one of the largest rental housing demolition applications in Toronto. The level of density proposed at over 2,000 units makes more sense in an area that is strategically planned for growth, like along an avenue near to higher-order transit. The apartment block is located in the heart of a residential neighborhood with an incomplete sidewalk network, over half a kilometer from the nearest TTC stop, even further from any form of higher-order transit, and is accessed only by small local roads. Because of the sensitivity of this application and the level of concern from the community, I focused from day one on ensuring additional community consultation opportunities, including a working group process, with the hope of securing meaningful revisions and avoiding the application being appealed to the OLT. While changes were proposed through that process, they were outweighed when the applicant didn't make significant concessions on the most prevalent community concerns, which were predominantly the height and the density. We ended up at the OLT anyway, where I understand the application set a record at the OLT for number of registered participants at 131. While this settlement offer incorporates some of those changes established through the community consultation, it really exemplifies the issues with the OLT process. When the application was still under review prior to appeal, the towers ranged from 12 to 30 stories. The FSI was, I won't bore you guys with all that, there were 2,021 units. After the settlement has come forward, heights were kept down, but we have over 300 additional units of housing on this site. The total number of housing now is 2,359. Additionally, the application now includes a space for a daycare, one of the positive changes to the application. However, the community benefits contribution will not even be enough to secure that daycare as an in-kind benefit, so it will end up being a private daycare. In this case, growth does not even come close to paying for growth. I don't know how we are supposed to manage development in this city when our city-building decisions are constantly overruled or undermined by the OLT. If city council approves this settlement, I don't know how to explain these changes to my residents. Other than to try to explain the impact the OLT has on development in the city, my residents are extremely frustrated, and they have a right to feel that way, and I share their frustration. We acknowledge that change is coming, but we, as a city, need to be mindful and sensitive to ensure that that change respects the neighborhood characteristic as well as the neighborhood infrastructure and its limits. This is not something I can support, and I hope my colleagues will support me in sending staff to a contested hearing at the OLT. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Holliday, I know that you wanted to speak on it.
Thank you, Speaker. And I will be brief, and I will commend Counselor Morley for her work in the community on this. I know how difficult it is, and I will be voting with Counselor Morley to refuse this application. Speaker, three generations of my family came from Long Branch, and I still visit that place. It's a very important part of the city. It's a beautiful part of the city. And when I said the word before, I think that this is an abomination. You should look at the aerial views, and you realize that this is a proposal that is isolated from the rest of the busier part of the area, far away from Lake Shore Boulevard. And I understand that, and I've heard from the community on this, and the association, they are frustrated. This is representative of all the things that are wrong with how our rules are set up and what the system is, because it's gone to a place that it shouldn't be. And I think we should send a message back. You know, the effect of a development like this is that it breaks any trust or will to continue to work and evolve planning in the area. You know, there's a really important avenue study that's coming up along Lake Shore, and you know what I think will be the reaction of the community? That's it for density. They've done their part. They've done more than their part if this goes through. And that just destroys it for everyone else. You know, I had some other stronger comments that I'm going to temper late in the hour in the sensitivity of this, but I would just say that the community of Long Branch has existed a little over 100 years, and it was formed just a little under 100 years ago as a town. And there were many, many families and thinkers and politicians and town planners that built a vision for that part of the city, and they would be very, very upset and very displeased with us right now watching this vote. And we'll see where it goes, but I am a hard no on this. Please take a look at the maps, think through what this is all about, and I'll stand with Counselor Morley and the community in pushing back on something which is unwelcome.
Thank you. Counselor Perks, you want to speak?
Thank you, Speaker. First, I want to say that the in-camera motion that Counselor Morley has moved is fine. It's very helpful, and I encourage you to support it. But I want to offer a note of caution on the consequences of voting down a settlement offer. And this is just my view. It's, I'm not telling you how to vote, but I think it's important that we understand. And this is something I have to say to my community all the time. The way Premier Ford has rigged planning in the province of Ontario, local councils have two choices. They say yes, or they say we'll let somebody else decide. And I think it is dangerous for us to pretend for a moment that if someone goes to the Ontario Land Tribunal and we get to a settlement offer that our staff can support, that we can do better than that, because we can't. In the public interest, the worst thing that could happen is we turn down a settlement offer and go to a contested hearing, because then the gloves are off and we could get something much, much worse than what staff are recommending to us here. And I think that for, you know, Counselor Holliday and Counselor Morley are both right. If we vote for this, folks are going to be angry at us. They're going to be furious, particularly with Counselor Morley, and that's unfair because Counselor Morley didn't write the ridiculous amendments to planning law that this provincial government has introduced over the last couple of years. Counselor Morley didn't appoint members to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Counselor Morley isn't in a position to say no, but because we're the only transparent and accessible government involved in planning, we're the only place where people can go to express their outrage. So I just, as much as I would like to vote with Counselor Morley on both of these, I can't vote for turning down this settlement offer because the impacts on her community could be still worse than what's in front of us. And she and I have talked about that, and we continue to respect and support each other's work.
I just want to clarify what we're voting on here, because we're voting on the confidential And the confidential, but I don't believe the confidential item in the confidential motion is what Counselor Morley wants. Right? So I just want to make it clear so everybody understands what they're voting on. No, no, but, okay. I'm just trying to clarify that with the clerk, exactly what we're voting on here. I mean, because if we're voting with Counselor Morley, I just want everybody to understand what they're voting on. Right? On which motion? Mary Cha?
Just to, point of order, just to clarify, that the clerk seems to be of the opinion that if we support Deputy Mayor Morley, we would vote in favor of her motion, right? And then it's up to us to say yes or no as the item. And then it's up to us to say yes or no as the item is amended. If the item is a no, that we do not accept this offer, then councillor Morley will then have to move a motion to keep, so the item will die, the settlement will not proceed. But then councillor Morley will need to move a motion to keep the confidential report confidential, okay? To keep it confidential, so that it's not become public. Am I correct? That's what the clerk said. Yes? Okay. So councillor Morley, I think, if that occur, then you need to move a motion, the clerk will ask you to move a motion to keep the confidential report in confidence, okay?
The motion, councillor Chrysante is just asking the question. The motion that councillor Morley is moving is no to the settlement, correct? Councillor Chrysante just wants clarification. On the motion by councillor Morley, it's on the screen. On favor, recorded vote.
Councillor Chrysante, please.
Recorded vote.
Councillor Pasternak. Councillor Chrysante, can we get your vote, please? The item as amended does not carry. The vote is 3 to 20.
Okay, councillor Morley, I need you to move a motion for a technical amendment, Is that it? On favor, opposed, if any, carries. That's it. Thank you. We'll go back to, we'll go back to EX 25.6. Councillor Fletcher, do you want to move your motion?
Quick item, I was trying to quickly itemize it before. It is on the economic action plan, and it just takes into account that there's been a whole number of changes, including the carbon tax got changed, we're going to need money from the feds and province, and to make sure we're taking, our staff take all that into account, all the changes when they're bringing forward.
I'll take a recorded vote.
It's up there, is it up there yet? When they're bringing everything forward in Q4.
Okay, where's the motion? Yeah, there it is on the screen by councillor.
The most elusive motion ever, it's now been captured, and it's going on the screen. And to prioritize those items that...
There's the motion. Recorded vote.
Thank you. Recorded?
Yeah, recorded, because councillor Myers has an interest on it.
Councillor Chrysante, please. Motion one carries unanimously, 20 in favor.
Item is amended. Do we need a recordable? Yeah, recorded vote.
The item is amended, carries unanimously, 20 in favor.
Thank you. Councillor Mantis, you held down GG 23.2, request to review suspensions. Councillor Mantis?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. To staff, to Ms. Charki. Genevieve, can you please take us through the process of how you came, how you and your team came up with the recommendations that are in front of us?
Of course, through the speaker. So we came to this decision because we follow the process that is part of the supplier suspension process, which is, we received a request from Mr. Corbo for IPAC and Pave One. As part of the process, we then review the documents that have been provided, including their profile, their experience, and their references. We were also provided statutory declarations indicating that they were the sole director, owner, and providing direction to both companies. As part of our review, we were also reviewing our supplier suspension procedures and our bylaw. When this suspension took place, we did not have these procedures in place. So as part of our review, we also came to realization that it no longer aligned with our current process, bylaw, and procedures, which is why, at this point, we, after review and ensuring that there was, no longer the risks existed back in the day, existed now, we are coming forward to try to align with our current processes, which is a maximum of five years for a supplier suspension for contraventions against the supplier code of conduct, and a minimum of five years, but typically it is a five-year suspension for illegality. We also just completed a review of other jurisdictions regarding the maximum terms, and at this point in time, the maximum term, the longest maximum term we found is 10 years, which is the federal government.
Now, Mr., the company that we have in front of us, how many years have they been suspended?
They've been suspended since, it's a dual suspension. So originally, IPAC was suspended in 2012, and Pave One construction was suspended in 2014.
So one has done 12 years, and the other company 11.
Correct.
Which is, that is over and beyond the maximum suspension that the federal government has.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Okay, so to councillor Ansey, this item is here without a recommendation. So what, oh, councillor Mantis has a motion? Okay, councillor Mantis?
Madam Speaker, the motion is to pass staff recommendations, to adopt staff recommendations.
Staff recommendation? Okay. Councillor Carroll. There's councillor Mantis' motion. Okay, councillor Carroll to speak?
Wonderful motion. Call the question, please, Madam Speaker.
Okay, let's call the question. So we have the motion by councillor Mantis, on favor. Pardon? Oh, on favor of calling the question. Recorded vote? Okay. It's councillor Holliday, it's 9 o'clock. Okay, recorded vote to call the question.
The motion to end debate carries, the vote is 16 to 6.
On the item, recorded vote. On councillor Mantis' motion, that's the only item, because it's here without a recommendation. Yes. Okay. Councillor Holliday has asked for a recorded vote.
Motion one carries, the vote is 19 to 3.
Okay, our next item is IE 23.9, fossil fuel. Councillor Sax, you held the item down. Do you have questions to staff?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. So, question, so Mr. Nolan, the council instructed you to report back on two items, the most serious being whether they're, whether it's consistent with transformed TO, for the city to carry advertising on city assets that promotes fossil fuel use. The report that you provided to us did not answer that question, correct?
To the speaker, that is correct.
And this is an important question that deserves a proper response?
To the speaker, yes.
And there are cities around the world that are beginning to restrict fossil fuel advertising on public assets, correct?
Yes, we have seen that, primarily outside of Canada, but we are seeing cities around the world that are banning fossil fuel advertising.
Right, and we had a decision from the International Court of Justice just yesterday, clearly ruling that states all around the world have a legal obligation to do everything in their power to reduce fossil fuel use, correct?
Well, I haven't reviewed the official ruling. That is my understanding, yes.
All right. And your team agreed that there is important policy and legal work to do to answer the question that council directed you to answer, correct?
Yes, to answer the question, we do need additional policy and legal work.
Right, and you drafted a motion to have your team do that work, which is what council asked you to do before, correct?
Yes, we've worked with legal as well to determine the timing, but we have work to drop the motion as requested.
Thank you.
Councillor Sax, do you want to speak?
Yes, please, I have a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, so we are in a climate emergency, we do have this decision from the International Court of Justice. We do have this decision from the International Court of Justice. It is a long one, but driving home just how, in how much peril we all are, and how quickly it's moving, and how every government has an obligation, a legal obligation, to do everything in its power to reduce fossil fuel use. And at an absolute minimum, our staff should answer the questions we ask them. So, my motion is to send it, to send it back. That's item number two, and item one is just to keep track of greenwashing complaints, so that we'll know whether the Federal Competition Bureau is doing anything with them. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think all members of council have received a number of emails from members of the public, asking us to take urgent action on this, and I'm asking for your support to have staff do what we already asked them to do.
Okay, thank you. So, on the motion by, oh, Counselor Fletcher, you have a question?
Thank you. Counselor, I understand the first one about complaints. I am having trouble, how are staff supposed to know what a actual fossil fuel advertising is? That's not really clear in your motion. You see, everybody has an idea of what it should be, including you or staff, so I see your motions here. Oh, Gord, pardon? Does it include anything with plastics?
Counselor Fletcher, we did already ask staff to do this work. They reported back without doing the work we had directed them to do. This sends the same work back to them. The staff will tell us what they think promotes the burning of fossil fuels, and it's not, it doesn't talk about plastic, it talks about burning of fossil fuels. I don't think that's a complicated concept. It seems to have been well understood in the decades that I've been dealing with climate change issues, and when the staff drafted the motion, they didn't have any difficulty understanding.
Oh, so the staff drafted this motion for you? Or you asked them to draft this motion?
I asked them to.
You asked them to draft?
I asked them to draft a motion after they agreed.
But that's fine, but this isn't their motion, sorry, Counselor.
After they'd been instructed to do work, and they didn't do it.
They didn't ask you to make this motion, you asked them to draft this motion about fossil fuel burning. So, are they really clear about what it is or what it isn't? Because I don't want to confuse our staff. I understand about complaints, it's very clear. Item number one, recommendation one of yours is very clear, but recommendation two gives me some pause, simply because it's very hard to know what you think that might be, or what staff might think that is, and they didn't ask you to move this in this way.
Well, Counselor Fletcher, have you had a question about it? I mean, staff are available for questions, and I told you.
I'm asking you, because it's your motion, Counselor.
All right, and I told you two weeks ago I would be doing this, and I don't think there's any confusion about what is advertising which promotes the burning of fossil fuels. And when staff report back to us, to the committee that you and I sit on, there will be every opportunity to ask them then exactly what they mean.
Well, I think that, that to me isn't that clear there. To accept advertising on public assets, what are they, which promotes? I just don't think that that is clear enough for me, as far as what it means to be burning fossil fuels, because Counsel Perks thinks it includes plastics, you might not think that, other people might think it's just about burning gas, I don't know. So, that is still a bit confusing to me, and that's, you've clarified my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holliday?
So, to Counselor Sacks, just on this item of burning fossil fuels, so can we not advertise the TTC on assets? Because like buses run on fossil fuels, or wheel trans run on, I think, is it gasoline now, the small ones? I mean, how far does this go? Can we not advertise automobile companies? What about like Esso? They sponsor community events. So, do all, does all of that get ruled out?
Well, Counselor Holliday, the staff haven't done the work yet. The question for them to do is come back to us with recommendations. First of all, the threshold question, which council already directed them to answer, which is whether carrying advertising that promotes the burning of fossil fuels is contrary to our transformed TO goals, which council has committed to. And the second thing is, is it feasible for us to refuse to accept future fossil fuel advertising? And they would necessarily include in that definitions as to what they mean. There are many examples around the world of different scopes of these kinds of bands, and I trust our staff to be able to understand the difference. Certainly, Mr. Nolan, with his decades of experience dealing with climate change issues, is very well able to distinguish what he's going to recommend and what he isn't.
Okay.
Counselor Cole, you have a question? Okay. Go ahead.
Tell me that you're saying that advertising using the subway in Toronto, staff should report on whether that's legal or not?
Well, the TTC has already adopted its own policy about fossil fuel advertising, but.
They use fossil fuel.
Well, some of the TTC uses fossil fuels and some doesn't, and we're moving as quickly as possible to get away from it. But this is not a question about promoting the usage of the TTC. The question that I trust Mr. Nolan to be able to answer is which kinds of ads promote the burning of fossil fuels, and should we collect, is that consistent with our existing policy? Should we refuse to accept them, and if so, which ones? These are all questions that the staff can be trusted to answer, and that we can debate once they report.
But aren't you putting the staff in an untenable situation here? Where you're basically indicating that advertising, the use of fossil fuel, which the TTC uses 24 hours a day, should be considered as being illegal, because the TTC burns gas, oil, diesel fuel, they burn everything, all the trucks that come in and out of Toronto, you can advertise trucking, you can advertise taxi drivers, because they all burn fossil fuels. So, you're asking the staff to make these decisions that are really impossible for them to make?
Well, with all due respect, Counselor Cole, I disagree. I think our staff are very capable of making distinctions between what we should and shouldn't advertise, what we lend our brand to. We are in a climate emergency. I don't know if anybody noticed what the weather was like today, or the fires around the world.
It's not about the weather today.
It is, excuse me, Counselor Cole, I'm attempting to answer.
It's about your untenable position here.
This is about burning fossil fuels. Advertising which promotes the burning of fossil fuels builds a social consensus to keep doing what we have been doing, in the teeth of, among other things, a decision from the International Court of Justice, that every government in the world has a legal obligation to do everything in our power to stop this. So, yes, I'm asking our staff to look again at what we already told them to do, and they came back without having done it. They should do what council tells them to do and bring their answer back.
Counselor Cole, Counselor Cole, please, don't argue at the TV set. He's looking at the TV set. He's arguing with the TV. Okay. Okay, okay, we're finished. Counselor Cole, you're done, you're done. Recorded vote on the motion. No, she spoke, she, oh. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you so much, Gord. Number one, I think, is fine, we're looking at those complaints. It's shifted a little bit from the motion that we would then pass them on, but if we're hearing complaints, I don't think, I understand what Counselor Sacks is trying to do with number two, but I think that, I don't think we should pass that one, because it's very clear to me, if it's cigarette advertising, I know what that is, alcohol advertising, I know what that is, fossil fuel advertising is pretty big, we hear Counsel Perks said now it's covering plastics. So, I don't think that's fair to our staff to do that, and I just think that, let's just get number one, know what people are calling in about for greenwashing, but not do number two here tonight. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Malik, Counsel Cheng, please. Counselor Ainsley, thank you. Counselor Crissanti, please. Part two of the motion does not carry, the vote is 2 to 19.
Okay, let's do quick releases. Oh, item is amended, on favor, carried. Counselor Fletcher, you had some quick releases.
I do, Speaker, and thank you very much. I have quick releases, CC 32.12, 66 Oakman Street, amendment, et cetera. I do have one amendment there, I'd like to move for that.
Okay, we'll put it on the screen.
Thank you.
CC 3212, amendment by Counsel Fletcher, on favor, opposed if any, carried.
Thank you.
Item is amended, on favor, carried.
And then CC 32.18, Oakman, Minas Singh, Ontario Land Tribunal Hearing Equestria Directions, Ward 14. And I'd like a recorded, oh, never mind, that's fine, yes, that one.
You want a recorded vote?
No.
No. Okay, on 3218, on favor, carried.
Thank you.
18. She didn't move anything, she just.
No.
Released it.
Just released it.
Yeah. Now, members, the cycling network, item IE 23.6, if you recall, when we were moving on the motions, Counsel Pasternak was not on the screen. He has submitted his motion in, so can I have a motion to reopen, so he can submit his motion, on favor, carried. Counsel Pasternak, can you move your motion, please?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I do appreciate the reopening. The first part is really asking the general manager of transportation to explore sidewalk connectivity and expansion in Bathurst Manor, one of the most deficient sidewalk areas in the city. And city council directed city general manager of transportation to attend to addresses on Benjamin Boeck Trail for a sidewalk, a major sidewalk deficiency, and determine the state repair. So, micro issues.
Okay, on the amendment by Counsel Pasternak, on favor, carried. Item is amended, on favor, carried. NY 2519, 5799, 5915, Young Street, Counsel Cheng.
I have a motion?
Yeah, NY, sorry, NY 2510, yes.
Thank you to staff for the long hours to get this motion.
Okay, Counsel Cheng, put her motion up on the screen, NY 2510, on favor, opposed if any, carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the item, because it was here without a recommendation. Now, the next one is SC 24.2. Counselor Candevale, you held it down, our Scarborough Centre secondary plan. Do you have questions to staff? Okay, if we can bring staff down? Oh, you're there, okay. Counselor Candevale, go ahead, ask your question.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, everyone, for, especially staff, for staying back, kindly appreciated. This is a significant update for a significant part of Scarborough.
Counselor Candevale, we're asking questions.
Yeah, I'm just thanking people.
Okay, but you're speaking, like, ask a question.
Just questions, okay, okay, thank you. To staff, as part of the status update, staff are clear that the intention is to encourage and, what's the other word, encourage and employment in mixed-use development. In other secondary centre plans, we've set minimums. Is that part of the consideration as we move towards a final report?
So, through you, Speaker, yes, the plan that should be in front of council later this year, so the plan is not yet in front of you, but the policies that we're looking at, we're working on would be encouraging non-residential uses. The forecast we're looking at for the area would roughly double the employment in the centre from the number of jobs that exist there today.
Gotcha. Are we considering setting minimums as perhaps as part of that plan?
So, through the Speaker, that is something we can look at. At the moment, what we've been focused on is having requirements in some blocks for non-residential, and having a minimum employment forecast for the overall area. The council did reference, we have looked at that in some areas before. Typically, it's more in our employment areas, when we're dealing with employment conversions of lands that were previously 100% employment, and maintaining a minimum number when they convert to mixed use.
Okay, but it is part of policy and other secondary plans to have minimums on non-res, as opposed to employment?
Through the Speaker, it has been in very limited cases. In some cases, those are, those are under review.
Okay, gotcha. Moving to the map, if we can go back to the map, there's obviously tremendous density. To what extent roughly are the towers captured within the PMTSA? Do we have a sense roughly, and if, can staff later on produce a map to demonstrate which towers are outside of the PMTSA?
Through the Speaker, the majority of the towers are within the PMTSA. The PMTSA ends at Brimley, so towers in this particular rendering west of Brimley would not fall within the PMTSA.
Okay, gotcha. And has staff received feedback from some of the employment land uses that abut or nearby this secondary plan? And what has been the feedback?
Through the Speaker, yes, we've had some pretty significant consultations with major employment uses, particularly west of Brimley. Since the spring engagement, we've had targeted stakeholder meetings and have had some very productive discussions. It's mentioned in the report that as we move it towards the final secondary plan in the fall, there will be adjustments to some of the policies to ensure appropriate compatibility and viability of those employment uses, while we realize the goals of intensifying housing and mixed-use development within the centre.
Is there a recognition that as we gear towards the final report, and many Scarborough residents face long commutes to downtown, the tremendous importance of complete communities that provide not just commercial retail work job opportunities, but well-paying jobs that are part of a. are part of a comprehensive and complete master plan or secondary plan?
Through the speaker, yes, definitely, a complete community is a central premise of the secondary plan, as it is for all of our plans for our nodes, and that includes the mix of residential employment as well as community services, facilities, parks, and so on.
Thank you. And moving back to the map presented, there's some limited green space, but there's no visible public realm that has significant public space that invites the current and future residents. We're looking at 75,000 residents by 2051. Are we looking to address that lack of perhaps a considerable wider square, if you will, as part of a public realm?
Through the speaker, there's approximately 20 hectares of parkland that would be secured through the plan, including significant multi-hector parks.
But no, particularly like a square, like an open public square?
So, Albert Campbell Square remains a focus of the secondary plan in front of the civic centre, between the civic centre and the town centre. That's intended to be revitalized. And the woodlot right in the front of this particular image, the Frank Faubert Woodlot and Hand of God Park, would be expanded through parkland dedication on its edges.
Thank you, that was your last question. Any further questions? Okay, councillor Candevale, do you want to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, 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 thank you, Speaker. Thanks again to staff for staying back and answering the questions in a meaningful way. I think the secondary plan before us, though, in a couple of words, really impacts the entirety of Scarborough as we build out, obviously, the need for housing over 25 years. What's projected is to be created, built out by 2051. And as we proceed towards the final report, I think we really need to reflect on how we master plan, how do we create secondary plans, and what are the policies that are within the teeth of the master plan that guide economic development, that guide employment beyond commercial retail, but good well-paying jobs. We pay a lot of homage to complete communities, to vibrant, pedestrian-friendly communities where people can live, work, and play in their community. I think for many in Scarborough, and very recently since the community council meeting, there's been greater knowledge from organizations like the Scarborough Community Renewal Organization, SUN, Scarborough United Neighbours, SCAN, Scarborough Civic Action Network, amidst a number of residence associations that are becoming more aware and conscious of the significant planning decisions that we make. And I encourage staff, and it was reassuring to hear, there is consideration of looking at minimums when it comes to employment space, employment opportunities, but also a recognition that amidst this tremendous density, and if we can have the map back on, that there needs to be greater consideration for the public realm. The areas of the green space to many are inadequate. There is a lot of potential creativity that we can make with a lot of the space that the few landowners have of something that is vibrant akin to Nathan Phillips Square, the space around Harbour Front, and it's an opportunity to reimagine how we do density and how we do communities. So, I appreciate the work that's transpired. This has been a number of years. Not everyone in the region or district of Scarborough is completely aware of the work being presented. I hope staff are looking at further engagement, at presentation to the community in the fall before final adoption and approval, so there's a greater sense of how we're building the framework, particularly the policy framework, and how we guide these significant decisions in the coming decades. It, of course, is not going to be built out in five, even 10 years, likely up to 2025, as indicated in the report, but it's incumbent on us to get this right for the next generation with Scarborough, because it's clearly, there's a lot of housing supply, but questions on employment space, non-resident space, public spaces for arts, culture, and community should be paramount. They were not at the altar of supply, sacrificing, compromising the interests of the public, especially the next generation, the young people of Scarborough who do want to live in the community, who want to live in these spaces, that are looking for different housing options, but want to have a space that is vibrant, that's inviting, that's involving, without having to go downtown for work or downtown for arts, music, cultural venues. So, this is, I think, important, that our policy framework sets minimums when it comes to certainly non-residential, but I would advocate employment, public arts realm spaces, as well as commercial retail. We've got to look at
Councillor Candevale, could you go to your desk and speak? I don't know why you're speaking there, you might, it's very loud.
Okay, Speaker, this is
No, but go to your desk.
I'm almost done. It's unprofessional, I'm in the middle of an important conversation about the future of our region, and it's also obviously connected to the map. But with that, I'll conclude that the work that we do here has tremendous impact and significance for communities that are going to be living, currently living and will be living the next 25 years as the secondary plan is built out. So, I encourage staff to take these comments, as well as the ability and the opportunity to engage with the Scarborough public in the fall, to have greater feedback opportunities as we move towards final adoption and approval. Thank you, Speaker.
Councillor Ainslie to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I'll be very quick. I just want to thank staff for all of their hard work that they've been doing on the secondary plan.
Because you're not supposed to be
Unfortunately, councillor Thompson's not here, but we share this area, the secondary plan area. Half and half, we've been working very hard together, working with staff, working with residents, businesses in the area, there's some employment areas we share. It's half Thompson's and half Ainslie.
Oh, you're kidding.
No. So, I just want to thank staff for all their hard work, everything they're doing, all of the engagement that they've done with all the stakeholders, as I said, residents, businesses, both school boards. I think this is a great vision, it's a great work in progress, and I'm looking forward to it as it continues on. Thank you very much.
On the, on the item, on the item, on favor, opposed if any, carried. Next item is TE 24.5. Councillor Sax, you have four items on Toronto East York, 126 130 Avenue Road.
Yes, I kept putting my name on the order paper. I can release five, six, and seven, the three items on 126 Avenue Road.
Okay, so you want to release five, six, and seven?
Yes, and then I have questions and staff for the next one.
Okay, so, on TE 24.5, councillor Sax is releasing, on favor, carried. TE 24.6, councillor Sax is releasing, on favor, carried. TE 24.7, on favor, carried. How about 2422, councillor Sax? Did you have a question?
I have questions for staff.
Okay, question to staff on TE 2422, 200 George Place.
Yes, starting with heritage staff, please. Until two, until last week, you were recommending refusal of this application. Why are you recommending approval of it now?
Through you, Madam Speaker. So, staff met with the owners and his design team. After an exchange of proposals and recommendations, we settled on a revised design that we feel is in keeping with the intent of the HCD plan. The owners have addressed the city's concerns that the building presented a monolithic appearance from the street, but they have mitigated this through a recess of the forward projecting third-story section, lowering its overall height, removing the masonry pergola structure entirely, thereby removing the impression that the building is three stories across the entire front elevation, and rounding the corners of the second story to provide further visual relief.
In your opinion, are there any remaining heritage reasons to refuse this application?
Through you, Madam Chair. No, we believe that the HCD and the associated guidelines, because they don't actually regulate the height of the building, but rather the perceived massing, the building now meets the intent of the HCD plan.
But you're aware that many of the residents in the area believe that the plan should limit height discrepancies between adjacent buildings. In your view, why is a two-and-a-bit-story building acceptable here when it's going to be quite a bit higher than the buildings around it?
So, the staff report did clearly outline that there were concerns with the perception of the overall building height, and that it was not currently in compliance with the HCD plan. But through the revisions that I've outlined, the applicant has since reduced the height of the third story, and with that removal of the pergola, we believe that the perception of height from the street, which is the guideline in the HCD, it's now not incompatible with the surrounding structures.
Right. Now, the proposal is not at this point in compliance with zoning, correct? The applicant will still have to go to committee of adjustment to seek zoning variances if they want to build this building?
Through you, Madam Chair, that is, that is correct.
And is that an appropriate venue for the neighbours to raise concerns about height and massing and setbacks and so on?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, they will have an opportunity to speak to those issues, yes.
All right, thank you. Question to our city solicitor. Is there anything improper or inappropriate about the last-minute settlement discussions that have taken place since the decision of the preservation board?
No.
And why is it acceptable to have those last-minute settlements and have heritage staff change their position after the preservation board has already given its opinion?
Madam Speaker, while that may not be the way things normally happen, there's nothing inappropriate about the way it happened this time.
Right. Is it open to council to send this matter back to the preservation board and ask their advice again? And what would be consequences if we did that?
There is a time limit, and council will miss that time limit, so the application will be deemed approved.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Sax, would you like to speak?
Yes, please, I have a motion.
Okay, councillor Sax, does staff have her motion? Okay, councillor Sax, if you can put it on the screen.
Yes, thank you. So, this is a situation where heritage staff and the heritage preservation board rejected the application. The heritage preservation board unanimously recommended refusal of the application. And then at community council, the applicant requested an opportunity to meet again with heritage staff and to seek to negotiate a settlement, which they did do. This motion recommends approval of the resolution negotiated by staff, in which you've heard staff say, in their opinion, it complies with the heritage conservation plan. There are still many outstanding concerns about this building, but they will be properly addressed at the committee of adjustment and are not properly relevant to the heritage permit which is before us tonight. So, I am asked, I accept the advice of our heritage staff, that with the changes that they've negotiated, this now complies with the heritage conservation plan, and ask your support.
Q. So, on the motion by councillor Sax, do I have quorum? Two, four, five, seven, nine, 10. No, quorum call. If I can ask the councillors that are sitting up there to come down to their seats, please? Councillor Candevale, councillor Cheng, councillor Matlow? Well, let's just see, do we have quorum? Okay. On councillor Sax's motion, on favor, carried. Our next item, councillor Pasternak, are you on the line? Councillor Pasternak, CC 3221, 2801 Keel Street.
I'll just release the item.
Councillor Pasternak?
Madam Speaker, I'll just release the item.
Okay. Councillor Pasternak is releasing the item, on favor, carried. Okay, now, our next one is MM 3221. Councillor Chernus-Lynn held it down, because I believe she wants to talk about the trees, right?
Thank you, yes, I would like to talk, Madam Chair. So, I'm moving an amendment to my motion, MM 32.21, requesting that the executive director of Environment, Climate and Forestry report back on the feasibility of making information on the outcomes of tree bylaw contraventions publicly available, and this would come as part of their report back on tree bylaws in Q4 2025. This measure would introduce some much-needed transparency, allow us to keep track of repeat offenders, and provide some actual accountability for bad actors who repeatedly violate our tree bylaws. I want to give you a little bit of context around this motion, and that's why I wanted to speak tonight. This was spurred by an incident in which an 80-year-old honey locust tree was removed without permits on a development site in Leeside. The original proposal for this site would have seen the tree injured or removed. The city raised concerns about this plan and worked collaboratively with the developer on variances, moving the building closer to the sidewalk and preserving the tree. Following the approval of this revised project, the developer removed the tree anyway, deliberately disregarding the tree bylaws, the good-faith efforts of the city and city staff to work with them on this proposal. The matter is currently being investigated by urban forestry with a potential maximum fine of $100,000, a penalty which is clearly regarded by some developers as a cost of doing business. The developer has since come back with a request for a parking pad on the site, which indicates that it may have been their intention to remove the tree in any case in an effort to work around what was decided at the committee of adjustment and negotiated by our staff. Since tree bylaw infractions are not considered applicable law under the Ontario Building Code, Toronto building has no choice but to grant permits and has no mechanism under which to pause or revoke them because of a tree law convention, a tree bylaw contravention. This incident, and many others like it across Toronto, underscored the need for enforcement with teeth to protect our tree canopy, and this motion is a step in that direction. This is especially crucial considering the key role of our, the key role that our tree canopy plays in Toronto's environmental initiatives. Our most recent tree canopy study in 2018 identified that the greatest amount of potential space for tree canopy growth is found on private property throughout the city, which is why it is so very important for us to ensure that existing trees are protected on infill development sites. To be clear, the intent of this motion is not to prevent building. We all recognize the urgent need for housing in Toronto, and we've done an awful lot on that tonight in our agenda. But this is about accountability and effective enforcement of our bylaws. Developers need to know that they cannot buy their way around the law. So, I hope you will support me in this motion, and I thank councillor Shelley Carroll for seconding it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holliday to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. I'm just going to ask that parts two and three of the original motion be voted separately, and I'll just offer the following explanation. Many people know that I'm critical and don't necessarily like all of our tree bylaws, but I also detest Scoff laws that work around these. And I thank councillor Chernus-Lynn for raising an important point, because it has to do with public confidence in our government and our rules. And, you know, I think there are people out there that would rather take a chance and see if they get caught, because the financial stakes are high. So, I'll support motion number one, but I do have concerns mixing up a city's bylaw with the requirements under the Building Code Act, and many of the reference laws or other statutes. So, I don't support that particular component. So I don't support that particular component of it. I have no concern with her amendment. Thank you.
On the screen. Motion one, on favor, carried. You want two and three together? Yeah, two and three together. Recorded vote. Okay, there it is. Recorded vote.
Counselor Crissanti, please. Counselor Pasternak, please. Counselor Pasternak, can we get your vote, please?
Yes, in the affirmative.
Thank you. Parts two and three of the item carry. The vote is 18 to 2.
Okay, item is amended. Or it wasn't an item, yeah, item is amended, on favor, carried. MM 3244, Counselor Perks, you held the item down. It's a member's motion. Okay, Counselor Perks?
I don't have any questions of staff at this point.
Okay. You'll move the item?
So I'm going to have to speak to it briefly?
Yes.
If no one asks questions?
You want to ask questions?
I don't.
Okay. Okay, you want to speak. Do you want to put your name up to speak? Okay, Counselor Perks to speak.
Okay, members, there's a long version and a short version. The long version would keep us here until sometime Saturday afternoon. It involves Build Toronto, which is the predecessor to Create Toronto. It involves the Committee of Adjustment. It involves an obscure rule that if there is a Committee of Adjustment hearing on a matter which simultaneously is front of the Ontario Land Tribunal for its site plan, they get joined. I could go on and on. None of that matters. What matters is, this is an affordable housing project which will create 74 units. It is between two stations on the future Eglington West Light Rail line. It is something that the planning staff are satisfied with. It is something that Create TO is satisfied with. It is something that the Affordable Housing Office is satisfied with. But a small piece of it lost at the Committee of Adjustment. Counselor Holliday wants to use that fact to leverage a motion that would make the city oppose its own affordable housing project at the Ontario Land Tribunal. I think that's bananas. So I'm going to vote no, and I hope you do too. That's the short version.
It's a good thing I prepared slides, so I'll ask the clerks to put them up. This is no joke, and Counselor Perks has put his foot and decided to meddle into a local issue. And I'm going to correct something, that this does not put the city opposed to affordable housing project. So the site is located on Eglington Avenue. Next slide, please. A quick look at the city's official plan shows that it's a mixed-use site. If I could have the second slide? I don't know. There's three slides. Second slide. Third slide we can go to, this is a plaza site. And there's a very large plaza on the left. The next slide, please. In 2021, city council approved infill development on this site. Three buildings. The fourth building is the plaza in the back. What's happened, and that had to do with a sale of land through Create TO. As Counselor Perks said, there's a very long story behind this. After that was approved by council, what you see on the right was proposed, which was now a rezoning on two of the buildings to go from a mid-rise built form, I think it was 11 stories, up to multiple stories. One of them was around 30. And so, of course, you know, this has had the community revisit all of this application. On the right-hand side, you see a blue road. It's just a line on there. But they're proposing actually a set of traffic lights to tell you how busy that particular road is. What everyone's worried about is how this development will unfold in an orderly fashion over time. And in particular is the protection of the function of the plaza because it's all that the neighborhood has. And if it's buried into a complex site which is unfolding over time, one of the proposals of the community is to revisit that private road and make it public. We're going to have this conversation probably later this year when the planning staff brings back a report on that. What's happened in the meantime is a whole array of various rezoning applications, a site plan appeal to the tribunal. There's an application for consent that hasn't been heard by the Committee of Adjustment that now has been appealed. So now we lose control over that and how the parcels of land are going to be carved up. And also, there is this matter over parking, which is a rather straightforward thing, except the Committee of Adjustment refused it. And if you look at the letter that I've attached to this particular motion, in it you'll see that I didn't tell the committee what to do with respect to the parking. I outlined some concerns on behalf of the community. But one of the things I asked for was that the committee to impose conditions that has to do with the underground parking structure, which is located underneath that private road. And one of the things that I would like to see, as all of this stuff comes together in a very complicated manner, bits and pieces over at the tribunal now, and bits and pieces that will go back before council, is I'd like to see conditions imposed so that we can protect council's ability to decide on a private road versus a public road. And they ask of the community of a road that is probably going to have arterial-level traffic, serving a plaza behind some buildings on a phased set of development over time, all they want to do is protect for the function of this. So I've asked for this solicitor to go there to look after our interests. I don't think anything is going to get resolved in a short period of time. I understand Counselor Perks has some strong views about how this unfolds, but I'm simply asking for council to make sure that we have some leverage in how all of this unfolds. The bigger conversation is coming. I didn't want to have it today. You don't want to have it almost at 10 o'clock at night. But I thought that the motion before us was rather simple. It sends a solicitor. It gives the ability for the solicitor to settle this. It opens the door for all kinds of options of already laid out a path for settlement. But most of all, it protects council's ability to get the best out of this development. And where this all really goes is not some fight over parking spaces. It's a fight over how this plaza will evolve over time, some brainchild of Create TO that has now gone sideways. And it allows things like the development of affordable housing and the final building in this to actually have a path to be accepted and approved. But if we have no leverage, this developer will continue to run amok with the way that they're steering this project. We've already been shown that council's decision was thrown out the window, and they came back for a rezoning for something completely different after the land transaction went through. So I got serious issues about how this is happening. I'm doing my best here to make sure that the community is protected and that council has all of the options it needs before it.
Thank you.
That's why this is here.
Thank you. Okay, are there any further speakers? Okay, so on MM 3244, recorded vote.
Not a big ask.
Counselor Chernos-Lynn, please. The item does not carry. The vote is nine to 12.
Okay, my last item is MM 32.45. Counselor Myers? Counselor Myers?
Thank you, Speaker. I'd just rise to say a sincere thank you to the Scarborough Cricket Association for their very generous in-kind donation of $150,000 to build a cricket pitch in Millikan Park. Yay! So to the 3,000 members of the Scarborough Cricket Association and their president, Shiv Perseu, I want to say thank you on behalf of city council. And I also want to encourage everyone to fill out the survey for the Cricket Strategy closing on August 17. Finally, I would like to say, Go Team Canada, which will be playing in the T20 World Cup Cricket Tournament next year in India and Sri Lanka. And I've been getting a lot of questions about the red shirt, so yes, this is a cricket jersey. Thank you. And I'd like a recorded vote on the item.
Okay, recorded votes.
Counselor Bravo, please. The item carries unanimously, 22 in favor. Mayor Chau, point of order.
Yeah, Madam Speaker, I think this is the last item. This was the last item. And I just want to take the opportunity to thank all the staff that managed to still be here. At almost 10 o'clock, I want to thank their commitment to public service, thank all their leadership, especially the clerk through a long evening, and to yourself, Speaker.
Thank you.
We've done it. So I just hope everybody enjoy a good August and have a good holiday, and we'll be back in September.
Okay, but...
And thank the councillors, of course, the councillors that stayed here. Thank you.
But can I ask the councillors not to pack up yet? We have quite a few business items we have to deal with here.
It's bills.
Bills. Okay, members, before I ask for a motion to enact the general bills, may I have a motion regarding the consideration of submissions on zoning bylaw and official plan amendments? Counselor Matlow, would you like to move that?
I've never done this before in all my time here. The committee and council considered submissions in making a decision on zoning bylaw and official plan amendments.
On favor, opposed if any, carried. May I have a motion to introduce the general bills? Counselor Fletcher.
Here we go. The leave be granted to introduce bills, 708 to 735, 737 to 751, 753 to 843.
Shall leave be granted to introduce these bills, on favor, Chopin, opposed if any, carried. Shall these bills be declared as bylaws and be passed subject to Section 226.9 of the City of Toronto Act 2006, on favor, opposed if any, carried. May I have a motion to introduce the confirmatory bills? Mayor Chau, would you like to do that?
The leave be granted to introduce bills, confirmed to the point of the introduction of this motion, the proceedings of city council meeting 32 on July 23 and 24, 2025. And I thank all the councillors for staying.
Shall leave be granted to introduce these bills, on favor, opposed if any, carried. Shall these bills be declared as bylaws and passed subject to Section 226.9 of the City of Toronto Act 2006, on favor, Chopin, opposed if any, carried. I want to thank all the staff that are here and members of council. Enjoy the summer, and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.